All right, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. Everyone is here except Merus. First thing is public comments on items not on the agenda. If anyone has something, you could bring it up. Fill out a speaker card. Assume we don't have that, so we'll close that. And we will go to approval of the commission minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the February 21st meeting unless somebody has comments.
I second.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining?
Aye.
Oh, we can't, we need four, so...
So...
But wait...
You have four.
We have three.
We, because both of you were trying to abstain, I think.
Well, both of us were not there.
But you can...
But if you've looked at the minutes and looked at me...
I've looked at the minutes, so I will be in... What's that? I've looked at the minutes and they reflect that.
Even if you weren't at the meeting, if you looked at them and reviewed them, you can vote.
Okay, well, we'll vote aye, so we can pass this. And then we'll move to item number two, Planning Process Amendments.
Yes.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. The item before you tonight, Development Review Process Code Amendments. We've kind of got a batch of kind of process-related cleanups and suggested amendments for you to consider this evening, as outlined in my staff report. And really, the code amendments focus on two chapters of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 1478, which is our design review, chapter for commercial multifamily mixed-use projects, and then Chapter 14.80, which covers use permits. So, the first recommended code amendment before you is clarification of the Complete Streets Commission role within the design review process. The code was originally amended when we created the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission back in 2012. And it specified that commission's role within the development review process when you had a design review application. Their role was to make an advisory recommendation for elements of a project related to bicycle and pedestrian elements. In 2018, the council reorganized and renamed the commission as the Complete Streets Commission and pulled transportation from the Planning and Transportation Commission and incorporated into that commission's charter. However, the zoning code was never updated as part of that change, and so we've kind of, from a process standpoint, expanded their role to include parking and transportation. But we identified the need to bring the code up to speed to clarify their role within the process, so that way it's clearly understood what their role and responsibility is and when they are applicable. So, in proposing the code amendment, as noted in the staff report, staff looked at both the Complete Streets Commission Charter and the general plan to kind of create some parameters for what should constitute the transportation review that triggers the Complete Streets Commission review. And so, as outlined in the commission's charter, they really are providing recommendations and advisory recommendations to the council on all things, well, as their role as it relates to council is everything transportation, bicycle, pedestrian, vehicle, parking, circulation. Then when you look in the general plan, it specifies a threshold for a specific transportation review when a project generates 50 or more net new trips. And so, looking at those two together, it appeared to be an appropriate and well-based threshold to trigger the Complete Streets Commission review, a transportation review as part of the development review process, when a project hit or exceeded that 50 trips, net new trips per day. So, basically, that's what's proposed before you tonight. I did send a notification to the Complete Streets Commission when this staff report was published, letting them know, and I will notify them again, depending on the action the commission takes tonight and before it goes to council, to make sure that they're aware that obviously there's a code amendment that will adjust their role within the process. Functionally, it will stay the same as it has since the commission was created. The slight variation is now, if you have smaller projects that are under this threshold that are going through the development review process, they would not go to Complete Streets Commission. So, a project that's generating 25 or 30 net new trips will still be subject to that more enhanced design review process but would not go to Complete Streets as part of it. Whereas now, any project that's under a design review application also goes to Complete Streets. And in staff's perspective, this is an appropriate threshold. I referenced it in a different section, but say like, the new clubhouse for the Springwood Apartments had to go to Complete Streets when really that was an unnecessary step to provide an adequate level of public review for that project. So, the goal is for very small projects, they'll come, they'll start out with the Planning Commission. Larger projects will start out with the Complete Streets Commission. Also, what we're doing with this is we are also incorporating public notification now. So, similar to Planning Commission and City Council, there will now be a public mail notice and posting on the site for the Complete Streets Commission meeting to increase the exposure there. So, there will now be at least three publicly noticed meetings for projects that are over this threshold. So, that is the first proposed code amendment that staff is bringing forward. The second one, similar, we've got kind of a process in place.
Questions about specific ones? Should we just hold them to the end, or should, can we ask them one by one?
I would just, let's hold them to the end and then...
Okay, yeah, I mean, if you've got clarifying questions, if not, I can kind of roll through and then we can touch on whatever's appropriate. The next one is design review study sessions. They were kind of loosely codified as encouraged or recommended, however, following the downtown building committee recommendations. And pretty much since their incorporation, we've kind of made them a almost required step, as a first step to come before the Planning Commission. So, we're now proposing codifying that requirement. So, starting out pre-application, but then having, any time a project could always come to the commission for a study session, depending on the nature of the request. And then also here, we are also, when we've been doing this for the past several years, codifying the public notification requirement as well. So, this helps to provide early public notification of a new development application that's coming through. And as you'll notice, for all these sections, we work to kind of create a consistent template for public notification. Over time and over various code amendments, we've got several different slight variations on public notification, so we're seeking to standardize that for use permits, design review, study session, and complete streets commission. So, we have one standard with regard to mailed property postings, and when it's a public hearing, a newspaper ad. Then, two other recommendations that staff did identify as an opportunity for consideration is along the lines of an appropriate level of review based on the size and scope of a project, is looking at an opportunity for, right now, if you're a, any non-single-family zone, if you add square footage that exceeds 500 square feet, you're subject to the full review process, at this point, Complete Streets Commission, Planning Commission, City Council. For some of our larger buildings where you may have an addition that's 1,500, 2,000 square feet, it's still a relatively minor project in the scope of what exists there. And so, there appears to be an opportunity to maybe raise the threshold to 50% of an existing building for just a single meeting before the Planning Commission. As noted in the proposed amendment, City Council will have an opportunity to call up any application that has, where the action rests with Planning Commission, so they will still have that opportunity to review if they see fit. But for non-controversial projects where one public meeting is sufficient for the level of project, there appear to be an opportunity to improve the process and best allocate the commission's time, council's time, and staff's time. So, this proposed code amendment kind of focuses on that. And then similarly, for use permits, obviously, there's use permits that come through that are higher profile, more controversial, that really it's most appropriate for council to take the final action. But in a lot of cases, use permits are pretty standard, and a public meeting before the Planning Commission is sufficient to address the needs, ensure that public notification and outreach, and then allow a use to move forward. And this is consistent with a lot of other jurisdictions that grant the Planning Commission authority to act on use permits. Similar to the other provision, there is a specific allowance for council to call up any Planning Commission action upon request to the city clerk. So, that way, for projects that are higher profile, more controversial, or ones that the council feels the need to review, there is a mechanism in place, but it won't automatically go to City Council for non-controversial and smaller scope use permits. So, then again, this was an opportunity to create a process appropriate to the scale of project that comes before you and not necessarily require multiple public meetings if they're not really necessary. And then, there was a few other minor cleanups and edits that went in, but that's really the gist of the code amendments before you. And based on that, there are findings outlined that specify that it is consistent with the general plan and consistent with the required findings to recommend approval. So, based on that, staff is recommending approval, and I am more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Zach. Any questions? Start on this side.
Yeah, I have a question about the 50 trips. And what I, I totally agree that this, I like this idea, but I had no way of gauging whether 50 trips is the right number. And what I, so you were saying that, for example, the clubhouse would be something that maybe wouldn't need it, like, as an example, how many trips did that project generate? And then maybe you could give me some, or ask some insight into what a 50-trip threshold looks like in terms of translating it to how many units in a residential or a commercial building? How big are we talking about? Would trigger that?
Definitely. So, the clubhouse actually triggered no net new trips because it was not in any new units, it was servicing an existing facility. So, that one, there was no net increase on the transportation side. On average, I think a single-family residence generates, I believe, it's, I'd have to look at the IT. Yeah, it's like 10 to 12, I think IT puts it somewhere on 11. A multifamily unit, it's like seven and a half trips per unit. So, there's two pieces. There is the project itself, and then that tested against the existing traffic activity on the site. So, for example, I was just working on the staff report, so the numbers are really fresh. The project at 425 First Street, there, that project will generate a net new total of, I believe it's, 65 trips. So, that would be above the threshold. There's about 5,500 square feet of office on the site right now, and it's proposing 20 residential units. So, the over-existing baseline would be 65 average daily trips. So, a project of that scale, however, the project, say, at 999 Fremont, which is about 1,500 square feet of retail and three residential units, that one generates, I believe, in the neighborhood of 35 net new trips over the existing café use which is there. So, that one would be a small enough project where it would not go to Complete Streets Commission. So, that's kind of a rough approximation of kind of the magnitude of projects. So, you're looking at, if you have a high-traffic site, you might be able to get a bigger project that standard the 50 net new, but in most cases, given the most underdeveloped nature of sites in Los Altos that are redeveloping, and 50 net new trips is a very low threshold. And tied to our general plan, I know in talking to traffic engineers, most find that an incredibly conservative threshold, if you look at other jurisdictions and their baseline for, say, when you trigger the need for a transportation impact analysis. And that was the other piece that we kind of identified as being appropriate, is if a project requires a transportation impact analysis, that should be a component of it that goes to the Complete Streets Commission for review as well.
Thank you.
Because we're not setting that threshold, right? The 50 trips has already been set.
That's in the general plan, circumstantial.
Correct.
So, I had two questions. One is, I would like to clarify, I'm pretty sure that in addition to two members of City Council choosing to bring a project forward that normally would not go to City Council but would end here, the applicant can always appeal. There's the 15-day period, so there's two ways that someone who is an applicant can get to City Council.
Exactly. You, an interested resident or an applicant, either one could appeal, and then that would take it up to City Council, or two members of the City Council could submit a request to the city clerk, and that would pull it up to the City Council as well.
And the second...
Can I just add, just to further clarify? Because it's essentially, anyone can appeal.
Yes.
Interested party...
It's very broad.
Everyone has standing.
Yeah, and that's not, again, that's not a change, that's the way it currently works.
Yeah, that appeals process, we're kind of clarifying it to be, I mean, we don't, the goal of an appeal is, if you start to limit, or say, resident or within, we have two thresholds for fees. You have, it's a lower fee if you're a resident or party within a projects notification area than if you're just a resident or an interested party in general. And I think the key is, that's really there to kind of ensure that there's, you have a sufficient interest, and it's not a frivolous appeal, and that's been a longstanding policy of the city for kind of the two-level fee approach, but any party can file that appeal.
And as I'm sure you're aware, the, your role is generally recommendations onto the City Council, so you don't make a lot of decisions that are actually appealable to the City Council. It's a little interesting, because we do have the Design Review Commission, and we will see appeals of that commission's decision go on to the City Council. The other thing that I find is a little bit interesting is that you're limited to a threshold of, was it 500 square feet for design approval? However, the Design Review Commission can approve single-family dwellings, whatever they might be, 5,000, 6,000 square feet, and those aren't recommendations. That authority rests with that commission unless it does get appealed to council.
Then, going back to the number of trips and that cleanup on that one, we have often heard from applicants, we've heard from residents who are affected by a project, that looking at a project as a single unit without looking at the cumulative, what's happening in an area, has been difficult. And I don't think this addresses that, and I'm not sure how it could be addressed, but the example I'm thinking of is, if you know that there are six sites going to be developed within the next two years on a single strip, whether it's El Camino or First Street, and you look at each one and say, well, this one's generating 35 trips, and this one's generating 35 trips, and this one's generating 30 trips, in the end, you have almost 100 trips coming through. And I'm wondering if this is something which the Complete Streets Commission needs to be aware of, if they aren't already, that the number of trips, whether it's triggering review or not, how can we cover that?
It's a good question, but I think it's also important to think of this 50 trips over a 24-hour period. I mean, you're really talking about two or maybe three trips an hour to stay under this threshold, and usually, projects under this threshold are generating maybe six, five, 10 peak hour trips, which is a minuscule amount when you look at, say, San Antonio Road, which sees 50,000 trips a day. So, even if you've got three or four projects that are under this threshold, there's still a drop in the drop in the bucket when you look at the context of a street, and even a residential street which may see 1,000 trips. And that's considered a very quiet residential street, because then again, it's not happening all at once. This is a 24-hour period that we're considering those average daily trips. So, I've definitely heard that concern, but I think it's always appropriate to look at the context and think of just what a tiny percentage that number really is when you look at the existing traffic on your quietest streets, your very busy streets, and it's such a small amount that even three or four projects in close proximity would still generate a negligible amount if they're all under that threshold.
Thank you.
I have one question, which I know the answer to, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, just because I think it's worth clarifying. So, page four, in the section where you're talking about requirement for design review, and in section B, it says Planning Commission Design Review. So, it says additions to an existing building that exceeds 500 square feet. So, it's the addition that exceeds 500 square feet, not the building, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so...
It's new square foot.
It could be ambiguous, even though, as I said, I think the answer is, so you might want to just say additions that exceed 500 square feet to an existing building, if you see what I mean.
So, it says additions to an existing building, so you're saying swap the placement?
So, it could be, the building could be, you could be reading that, I mean, as saying that the building exceeds 500 square feet, exactly.
It's wordsmithing.
Okay.
It is wordsmithing, but it's worthwhile clarification.
I got one coming up later.
Okay, you got one coming up later, all right, we'll be even. That was my only question of clarification, yeah.
Duho? Any questions?
I don't have anything I can tell you.
I've got a few. On 1478040, I guess I'm a little bit confused as to whether, we're calling this a pre-application design review?
That's the one that's required of projects.
And that is, because now we have an application process and projects that are deemed to be completed applications...
Was part, well, for, as part of the study session, is that your, that you might get a complete application based on a study session application?
Yeah, does, I guess, does this have to be, because it's pre-application, does this have to be done, it's more, I guess, part terminology, part just trying to understand, but does this have to be done before an application is deemed complete?
Yes, we're looking for it before the application is even submitted. So, before an application for a design review, or a subdivision, or use permit, or any combination thereof, is even submitted, we're now, as proposed, saying to the applicant, bring your more conceptual preliminary plans, submit them to the city, so we can schedule a study session. There'll be no action taken, but we want to, one, provide that notification to the public, and two, give the Planning Commission a chance to provide early feedback to help guide decisions on that final project that then gets submitted for formal review, which staff would then go through the regular process. Staff would review, and then you'd have your completeness determination, and then move forward through the public review process.
Okay, so, based on that, we, I think we recently went through a whole process on what was a, like, what was deemed a complete application, and there's like a checklist that goes with it that was developed. So, we would also have to amend that and add this to the checklist and to that process.
We have a submitter requirements checklist, we're actually, we're working on finalizing a, kind of a development flow chart that just kind of gives developers and interested parties an idea of, here's your flow from start to finish, and the first step would be that pre-application study session. And in the key is, is pre-application, meaning before you even submit that application, we're bringing this to the Planning Commission for some public discussion and feedback and guidance to, and in, so far, it's been well-received. Developers and applicants, in every case, I haven't, I'm not familiar with a single case since this was added to the code in 2012, where a developer said, I don't want to do this, I just want to move forward, because they appreciate that early public input, because they would rather make the design changes at the front end rather than a more kind of polished package, so to speak.
But you're agreeing, in fact, with what Alex is asking, which is, you're working on making sure that this clarification of when you need to do a study session, in addition to being encouraged when it's mandated, will be part of the checklist when someone looks at it to say, have you done this study session? Check yes.
Yeah, and I don't know whether it's just a checklist or actually part of that code section, wherever that was.
Well, that's this code section that's before you...
But there was a code section, wasn't there a code section on what was deemed a complete application, like...
But this is before the application.
If you look in...
The study session is before they make the application.
There's not a code section regarding complete application, but there is an administrative list that we maintain that shows applicants everything that a application will require. There might be some additional things that we do require of applicants, but we go through that checklist, and if it's not complete, we let them know the additional things that we need to take a look at.
Okay.
And actually, look at Attachment B, which is the existing code, as it's on the books today.
Yep.
And if you go to page 535 in 1478050, you'll see that the existing language for recommendation for a pre-application study session design review, that actually comes before initial application review. And so, in sequencing in the code, this new study session section will be in this exact same spot. So, sequentially, an applicant or an interested party would see that, they're going through, and then we'll have the support handouts that clarify this process.
Yeah, I just know that we had this, and it was several meetings around making it very clear to developers, like, at what point, what they needed and what was deemed to be a complete application, and it sounds like this is going to be one of the things that are going to have to have happened in order to be deemed a complete application once it actually comes.
And one of the things we're doing, and I think, especially with the use permit section, is when you see it, it's, over time, you've had different amendments and they haven't flowed right, and so, what we're doing with this, and why we've kind of, the revisions are kind of a little bit larger, even though the changes are technically minor, is to get better flow to each code section, so it makes more sense, and it goes in a sequential order. Like, use permit, the use permit findings had a different title, so just retitling them use permit findings just kind of makes logical sense, so someone understands what they're looking at, so...
And in this part of it, we're not allowed to comment on what we're thinking about, but like...
Which is asking questions, just clarifications.
Yes, and then, so Zach, on C, in that same section, that's a whole different study session, right? Because it's saying at any point in the application process, right? So, that's, once you've submitted your application...
Under 50.
If you want to have another study session, you're more than welcome to request one, or the development director may require one.
Yeah, so let's say, and to give you an example of how this might be used, and it's more of just allowing a flexibility, because a study session in our mind is a valuable tool that allows for input without having to take a formal action and maybe create a better project down the road. And so, say you've had a project, it's come through, it's going through the process, maybe there's public concern, maybe there's other things that have come up, and maybe the design changes in a significant way. We don't want to preclude that project, because now that it's, say, in the completeness review process, from saying, you know what, we've made some major changes, we want to go back and test the waters with the Planning Commission. So, that wording is kind of there to allow a project, maybe further along, to come back if something's changed and they want to get an idea of where the commission's at.
Or if they do value engineering and they've cut the size of the project.
Yeah, although, I guess, I was just clarifying that there's two, there's one that's required before you even apply, and then you have the ability to bring it back after you've applied through these study sessions, actually, two different, two different And then, on 1478020, so Zach, I'm assuming, because there's no stritethrus, this is all completely replacing the existing section?
It is, and that's where I think, the content is just, the change is really just creating this scope of projects that could be acted on at the Planning Commission level. Everything else here really, as I noted earlier, is to create a better logical flow to the language, and we were initially trying to just squeeze it in, and we, the feeling was, this is going to make more sense if we just retool it.
Right.
Everything is still the same as it was before, but now it's going to have a more logical and clearer flow to it.
Right, it's just completely amended and restated.
Exactly.
So, you're deleting everything that was there. And so, on 1478020, I guess a couple of questions. One, why are we excluding the, and I'm, why are we excluding R3-...
4.5.
4.5?
Right now...
And what is that, what exactly does it mean to be excluded?
So, really, what that means is those two zones are subject to the Design Review Commission for design review, and functionally, that's, right now, the R3-4.5 district, as you've seen in the study sessions, the code doesn't allow anything to take place there. As proposed, it, because it's a duplex zone, it's more in a single family, and it's closer to a single family than a multifamily, we've identified an opportunity that makes more sense for that district to go before the Design Review Commission rather than coming before the Planning Commission. So, really, by creating this, if nothing happens with that code amendment, it's no harm, no foul, because nothing can happen there anyway. If there is a code amendment that's approved that creates a process for additions, remodels to that district, the proposal right now is that the Design Review Commission is the most appropriate body to review those projects. So, this is kind of anticipating that project, since it's kind of running somewhat concurrently to this, even though this is now kind of...
You missed that one, that was, that's our unicorn zone.
No, I was here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just, I guess, a little bit, because it came before us, and so I wasn't sure why we were carving it out.
Well, we're parallel.
Okay, and then, the previous section, there was a carve-out for window replacements, re-roofing, rooftop venting, mechanical equipment, things like that, which isn't dealt with in this new language, or is that the exterior alteration? I guess, what are we doing with those? I guess, what are we doing with those elements?
And this is as it currently exists, any exterior alteration on a site that's outside R1 or R3-4.5 is subject to staff-level administrative design review. And so what we're doing is maintaining that, the wording's been reworked to flow with this proposed format, but it's, there's no change on that effect, which is, any exterior modification, so a tenant improvement, facade renovation, or an addition of up to 500 square feet, will continue to be processed at the staff level, as it has been since this code has existed. So the real, the change is, that's staying the same, we're now creating this mid-level review for projects that are over 500 square feet, but under 50% of the size of that, whatever building is being proposed, coming before planning commission. And then, new buildings and projects that are greater than a 50% addition would follow the current process, which is complete streets commission, likely, planning commission, and city council.
Got it, so that just gets, all gets captured, captured under exterior alterations or modifications, it's no longer, like, specifically called out?
Exactly.
Okay.
Can I, before you move on, can I clarify one thing about that R3-4.5? It came to us because it's looking for definition from around the zoning, and once that, once that's defined, then it's design reviews per view to implement it as being.
Because it's residential.
Because it's residential, exactly. That's why it started here, is because it didn't have really zoning, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
So they don't do zoning, they, they implement.
No, I get it, you can argue whether it's residential or not, because it's all duplexes.
Well, that's what Zach said.
That's how they want to look at it, that's, yeah.
And I mean, ultimately, that's still a choice to be made by the planning, or recommended by the planning commission, and ultimately acted on by the city council. And the reason it's there is that if nothing happens and that code amendment goes nowhere, the status quo will be maintained, which is, the code doesn't allow for any, any changes there as is, so you wouldn't, you're not losing anything, and I think it's practical, because in some way or another, there's more than likely going to be a code amendment that allows those property owners to do something.
Okay, and then.
Exactly what?
My next question, or, yeah, question, is that, because I tried to, when I read this, maybe it was too literally, but in all of these sections, it says, shall be reviewed and approved, right? Which basically says, like, anything that comes before it has to, like, shall be approved?
Um, I mean.
And so, I didn't know whether this was following the same language as was used elsewhere in the code or not, and I couldn't, it looks like, I couldn't find it anywhere else, and it was, so it was really just a question of, do we need?
Shall be reviewed, the word approved.
Shall be reviewed and may be approved or disapproved, like.
The existing, there's a couple of different terms that you could consider if that, I mean, really, I think, because if it's not approved, it's pretty self-explanatory. Approving authority might be a better term, the planning commission have the approving authority, that's used in the current ordinance.
Yeah, so I guess the question would be, is that the way, is that same wording used elsewhere and we're just keeping it consistent, or is this new wording that was brought into this section that we may want to take a closer look at?
Personally, I don't think you necessarily have to have that language in there, you can just say reviewed, because it's.
Yeah.
Or shall be the approving body, or have approval authority.
I think you, yeah, there's other areas, I think, where you, it was stated differently, so we can just look at that, but it was, and then, let's see. So right now, again, there's no 1478-090, but we're adding that with the transportation, and then appeals are called, and that's why appeals or call-ups is becoming 100? Is that right?
No, there is, there is, if you look in Attachment B, there is a 1478-090, which is requirement for transportation review. So that actually, it's an existing section, and we're just reworking it to reflect this new threshold and replace Bicycle Midestrian Advisory Commission with Complete Streets Commission.
Got it, okay. Okay, that's all my questions, thanks. Anyone else have any questions? So with that, we're going to open up to public comments. We've got three speakers.
In this issue?
Oh, sorry, we have none. They're all on number three, thank you. Okay, so we'll open it up for discussion.
I'm happy to start, thank you. I thought this was actually a nice job pulling things together and clarifying. Really, the only thing I would have to add, is again, very picky, as with my earlier one, but in all the underlined sections, where things, what you're proposing adding, planning commission and city council and commission, and, you know, none of that was capitalized, so it was all in lowercase, all throughout the underline, and when you stick it in the ordinance, so to me, that looks odd, and is not really consistent with how we usually do it. In fact, in the, in the staff report text itself, you use the capitalization convention, but in the underlined, you're not capitalizing. So, you know, whatever, I'm just pointing it out, if you're, if you're happy with that, that's fine, but it seemed a little weird that it was inconsistently identified.
Once, one, I have to provide a brief response.
Yeah.
What happens is, once the ordinance is adopted and goes into effect, it goes to our municipal code provider to get formally incorporated into our ordinance, and for whatever reason, it seems like most capitalization gets lost in that process. So, I mean, if you look at Attachment B and you go through, the commission is almost always lowercase, even though I think some of those ordinance in the past have capitalized, but I mean, I think the preference and probably the proper way to go would be to capitalize, because it's a specific body, it's not a general claim.
Right, right.
So, I mean, we can continue to do that, but it appears that what happens, once it goes into the formal municipal code, a lot of capitalization gets moved, and it's just, I'm not sure of the reason.
Huh, because even city councils lowercase, and planning commissions lowercase, and, you know, it just looks rather weird. But if it's going to get lost in the end anyway, then don't bother.
Some, some cities capitalize it all and other cities don't?
Yeah.
I've never gotten a good explanation for why.
As I said, in the write-up, in the non-underlined sections of your staff report, you're capitalizing, which is what I would sort of expect, but.
Just as we go through discussion amongst ourselves, maybe what we will do, though, is go section by section.
There are four big changes.
So if anyone has anything on.
Yeah, okay, I agree with every, I agree with everything, I thought it was very well pulled together and made a lot of sense.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
And I do too, I can support all of them. I agree with Sally's wordsmithing, that if you want to have an addition, an addition that exceeds 500 square feet to an existing building, I think it's clearer. And I have to say that in Attachment C, everything's there, but I think the sequence is a little out of whack. So it starts with whereas issues relating to transportation are high priority, and whereas, since 2012, the city's planning and transportation commission was responsible, then I think the next one should be, and whereas, the planning and transportation, transportation commission has become the planning commission.
Attachment C is actually the, it already is on the books since it's been, so that was the action that was taken.
Because it doesn't make sense that, I mean, it already has become a planning commission, so that's why it doesn't say that here, because in 17 it had not been, and now it has been following this. All right, Your Honor, I withdraw that comment. But I, I support all four of the changes, I agree, I think this is a really good streamlining of effective use of everybody's time.
Yeah, I concur, I mean, I feel like you're really trying to be more efficient with everyone's time, including city councils, so that, you know, they are not seeing non-contemptious, non-controversial projects. And also, the developers, I mean, even though you have added the design review process, that may actually help also streamline, because they, they won't invest significant capital in a project that they then get, you know.
Whips back.
Back to them. So I think that, I think everybody will benefit from this. And also, it's frustrating when you have a project, I think, and it's non-controversial and it sailed through, you know, a forum, and there's no one that's going to oppose it, and then you have to wait a couple months and go to city council, and maybe be the 16th thing on an agenda that's a four-hour meeting, and only to just get, you know, another rubber stamp. So it's really, like, good job Los Altos on trying to be more efficient with everybody's time, so.
I thought that clubhouse was a perfect example of why we had to do this.
Yes.
And there's always a backstop. The backstop is, anybody has an issue with it, they can bring it to appeal, and also city council itself.
Including council, right, yeah, exactly.
Can pull it.
I fully support all the amendments here proposed as well. If I'm to understand the staff correctly, if some of these, for example, the design review study sessions, if they were implemented already from 2012, wondering why it wasn't codified sooner than that, but fantastic.
Yeah, my only, I agree with everything that's been said, I would love to find a way to state it more eloquently, because to me, again, the way that it reads, it's like, if it comes before you, you have no, it's shall be reviewed and approved, means like.
So the approved is the part that you think, we talked about eliminating that possibly.
So, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think you just can delete the unapproved.
Yeah.
Or take action, there.
Act it on, yeah.
More for, it doesn't imply a certain.
Yeah.
Right.
So what's the action that we need to take for this item for staff? Do we do, make a recommendation?
You make a recommendation, and then this will be for the city council for consideration, and they go along with it.
So I move that we recommend the four significant items that were presented to us as changes in the code, with the changes that we suggest relative to not mandated approval and shifting the wordsmith to get the addition size as opposed to the building size.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it passes unanimously?
Good job, Zach.
Yes.
And we'll move to item number three.
Thank you very much, Chair Simek, members of the planning commission. This evening, you are going to begin a discussion and have a little bit of a study session or workshop on some work that the city council initially undertook back in October of 2018. It was a review of floor area ratios and whether or not floor area ratios could be a good tool from a site development standpoint to incorporate in the zone districts of Los Altos, not just the commercial zone districts, but some of the multi-family zone districts as well. In your staff report, we provided you with some examples and explanations of floor area ratio and what those could be used for in developing an appropriate design for buildings. When the city council referred this to the planning commission to take a look at, they also asked that you take a look at the recommendations of the downtown buildings committee, and we provided a copy of their final report on the set of recommendations that they made regarding the downtown and various design aspects and so forth that could be incorporated to achieve design that was, achieve development and design that was appropriate for Los Altos. So I'm going to leave this up to the planning commission to sort of guide the discussion here. Again, to start off, the key initiator of this whole discussion was floor area ratios and their appropriateness in Los Altos. Our commercial districts do not have floor area ratios, in fact, I think it was in 2013 or 2012 that floor area ratios in some of our commercial zone districts were actually taken away. There are some other things besides floor area ratios that you might want to consider and have us look into, if you're asking us to go back and develop a draft ordinance, those are things that help facilitate the design of the building and can include things such as limiting the top plate height on buildings to achieve roofs that have steeper pitches, or design elements that incorporate dormers, or require that roof areas of certain size be broken up and designed in a way so that you don't have one large surface or roof facing the street, or that introduces architectural elements into a building that can help a building more better integrate into the neighborhood that it's in. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions that the commission has, and ready to help you go through this discussion.
Thank you, any questions?
Maybe just as a kind of starter, I guess by initiating this discussion, there seems to be some inference that something is not working, or things aren't working properly, is that, is that a?
Well, it was, I think, as we were going through the downtown vision, and we were taking a look at some of the projects in the downtown, there was a question about, you know, what should the appropriate height of buildings be in the downtown? And one of the recommendations from the downtown buildings committee was that the heights be reduced in the zone districts in the downtown, and the council adopted those height reductions. But in order to better come up with a tool that could help articulate buildings and the design of the buildings, the council was asking, is a floor area ratio or a floor area table a good way to help people design buildings that are more in keeping with an area like the downtown? So that's kind of where this started, and in all honesty, I think our discussion with the city council back in October was more of a training session with them to get them to think about the floor area ratios and what floor area ratios were, and how they're used in different agencies, and whether or not they wanted to go down a path of actually developing floor area ratios or tables or other site development standards that could be used in the city. And then, if so, what zone districts should they be applied to?
I was actually puzzled by this, because I saw that this was at a meeting in October, and then we had an election in November, and there's a new city council with perhaps different directives. So are we really, is this really a directive of the current composition of city council?
I've been asked when, when are we getting this in front of the planning commission to consider, so I would say, yes, it's still something that the current council wants us to be taking a look at.
So, the whole thing about the downtown building committee's report, which was extensive, I think, brought to light the word expectation, and I think that a lot of response to what Du Ho is asking is, people felt that they weren't getting what they expected to be in the downtown. And I bring some historic information.
We're just at staff questions, right? Just to make sure that we're.
I don't think we're doing staff questions, we can't, forgive me. Never mind.
Should we do public?
Both the staff.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got, hold my historical till later.
Any other questions for staff?
Did, did you have, again, maybe, it's not so much a question, but I tried the link and it didn't work, whatisfar.org, strange.
What is the web?
It was a website that allowed you to take and apply different floor area ratios.
Right, it wasn't working.
It wasn't working, oh, that's too bad.
Yeah, I could see that it used to do that, because the little description, you know, but then it was.
I had just checked it about a month ago, and it was working then, so.
Yeah, okay, but just so you know, I wasn't able to play around.
Okay, sorry, yeah, that was, because it was kind of an interesting way.
Yeah, it looked like it, it looked like it would be, yeah.
For what floor area ratios are and how they can be applied.
Maybe they were just down temporarily or something.
I will double-check on that, though.
So, I have a question. So this, this initial downtown visioning committee and their report was started in 2014, and then after their final report, we then spent, like, two years on the downtown visioning, which solicited the opinions of hundreds, I don't know, maybe a thousand or more people in our town. And based on the visioning and the scenarios that vast, I mean, the multitude, majority of people in our town supported, like, where are those floor area recommendations? Because they don't, I would not imagine that they would line up with, where's all those recommendations that are based on, you know, the work of, you know, two years' worth of work and soliciting?
Well, the, the vision, it suggested that floor. Well, the, the vision suggested that floor area ratios be explored. It also suggested some different height limits for the downtown to be explored further. However, with the adoption of the downtown vision, the council was very much, before you staff go off and begin doing these things, make sure that we are brought into the loop and that we are sort of notified and are aware of how you're going to move these things forward. So we at the staff level have been really waiting on the council to complete its priorities in downtown vision implementation of some of the kind of low-hanging fruit is, I think, listed on the priorities. But what the specifics of those are, we're not quite certain yet. And we're waiting for the council to finalize those priorities.
Got it. So if, it would be helpful to have those because they seem to be moving in, they are going in opposite directions, right?
The downtown vision in-
I mean, I think what the downtown visioning, when they, when downtown visioning said, yes, you should look at height and you should look at floor area ratios, I think they mean look at it in a different direction than this. It's hard to, if you don't have that, those actual recommendations, which, like what would be, what would you imagine a timeframe for actually getting those?
In other words, I think the downtown vision is more recent than the report here.
Particularly in reflecting what the town wants to see versus of height and-
So, so can, just like with parking committee, we looked at a number of different reports. Can we look at also the vision along with what we've got?
But it doesn't sound like it exists. And I'm wondering, when did it exist?
Well, there is a finding.
There's a final, so it sounds like you would, your discussion could be better informed by the recommendations of the downtown vision. So getting you a copy of that to help-
Right.
-as we move forward in this discussion would be-
Because you could make inferences from this, which may not be in line with the inferences from the other.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and I, I don't recall specifically in the recommendations of the Downtown Buildings Committee that there were anything in there that said a specific floor area ratio should be evaluated. And we didn't even get that from the city council. It was taking this to you to see if you believed it was a good tool to incorporate. And if so, where and to what degree should the floor area ratio be incorporated?
Yeah, because I must admit, I was going to say, I agree with Ronit's comment partially, but, but really, the downtown buildings committee report, which I'm glad to have because I had never read the whole thing, but it's really not that relevant to the question that you put in front of us. I don't necessarily think-
The only comment they made is that the downtown zoning, this report points out that our zoning does not agree with the general plan because there's floor area ratio in the general plan.
I just want to make sure we're keeping it to questions for staff who are getting into discussion.
Has staff reviewed the general plan relative to floor area ratios being in it there versus what's in our current zoning code, which doesn't have floor area ratio in it?
We have reviewed it. It seems like in the discussion section of the general plan, there are some floor area ratios that don't sync up with some of the levels that we have in the zoning code, so.
So in fact, one answer to Duho, in addition to the question of why are we doing this, might be to coordinate so our documents are in correct relationship to each other.
Correct.
That's always a good thing.
Or if you find that they're not in correlation, you can recommend changes to one or the other to bring them into correlation.
One thing to look at, what's interesting about the general plan is it provides a discussion using the floor area ratio to kind of discuss and anticipate intensity. But it doesn't, the floor area ratio then doesn't translate into any of the goals, policies, or programs that are contained in the general plan. So it's a discussion point that doesn't go any further. And it's, it's hard to understand why some, there's been a longstanding, there was, floor area ratios were used in the downtown for a long period. They were significantly restrictive. And Phoebe can provide more background on this. And that was, the buildings committee from 2010 looked at this, but we were looking at FARs that were .5, .75, and created a different level of limitation. So those floor area ratios were a little bit more in line with the general plan. But the interesting thing is, there's nothing in the general plan that specifies the use of FAR. It's really more of a discussion point is in the dialogue versus anything in the, in the goals, programs, or our policies.
So if indeed we're going to get more information from the visioning final report, could we at the same time also get that reference in the general plan-
Yes.
-so we can see the actual language and make sure that we're comfortable with how we read it relative to the code? That was a question.
Perfect, thank you. We got it.
It sounds like October was a somewhat of a educational process. And so maybe I need a part of an educational process myself because I don't, this seems like it's stemming, it says it's stemming from downtown building, the downtown building committee. But downtown, it's all basically zero lot lines and two stories, right? So everything's necessarily dictated really by height, right?
That's, that's how it's dictated right now. Setbacks, height, parking requirements, lot coverage requirements, landscaping requirements. Those are all things that are components of the, the site development standards, building envelope that gets created when you plug all those in. And it's part of the analysis that you do when you look at a site and look at its development potential. You look at the zoning code and look at the box that gets created based on the zoning code. And then I think the floor area ratio, what it's trying to attempt to do is then, if you put in place a floor area ratio, which is a maximum square footage of all the floors of the building, how do you then go about molding what can be inside that box and-
And in order to have it not be, most of those buildings not be conforming, you'd be pretty close to 2.0, right?
Hmm, I don't know. I'd have to do a little more digging on that.
Is there a question there?
Would we have, would we have the ability to figure out what FAR is there to figure out if we're going to take this on?
Yeah, you would, you could require or ask us to go back and do some more sort of site evaluations of specific buildings in the downtown to give you a sense of what the floor area ratio is for maybe some of the new buildings versus some of the older buildings to help you arrive at what you think is an appropriate floor area ratio.
If that's the tool we choose to use.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Any more questions for staff?
Well, what, what are some of the staff's thoughts or opinions on this? Do you think FAR would be an effective way to-
Well, it, I've used floor area ratios in a lot of different applications. And if it is something that helps, I always look at them as a way to achieve a design in an area that is what the community wants to see in terms of development. I think that even though you can put in place floor area ratios, it doesn't necessarily guarantee that you're going to get a good design on a building because you could sort of squeeze that floor area into just a box. And that's not necessarily a good-looking building. So I, I kind of tend to look at them with some other things such as upper roof or upper floor setbacks from front property lines or rear property lines, maybe some height limits to the plate heights on the building to try and keep the different floor levels in scale, the scale that you're trying to achieve. Or in the reverse, require like we do right now, taller plate heights on some of the first floor spaces so that you're maintaining the flexibility of that commercial space and making it a usable space for future commercial tenants to go inside of. So I think they're a good tool. It just is, the devil's in the details. It's just trying to determine what the appropriate floor area ratio should be and what should be coupled with that floor area ratio to achieve the designs you're trying to get accomplished.
No more questions? All right, so we'll open it up for public comment. Three minutes each. Mersha, Alex, and then Eric.
Hi, my name is Mircha Vasquezian and just want to kind of talk a little bit about, I read the report and I just had some comments. I think in the context of, we talk about FAR and we talk about height and we kind of touched on all the elements, but nobody's talking about the density. We talk about how to modify the rooftops. We talk about all the elements of the building. But we wanted to have, from what we hear, smaller housing and not larger units. But we don't talk about the density, what we're going to do. I mean, talking about FAR without density, I think it just doesn't make any sense. As an example, you know, Mountain View, and I think it was mentioned by Zach, I think a couple of sessions ago, have a density of 63 units an acre just across the street from Los Altos, right? But their FAR, it's only about maybe two, maybe two and a quarter, depend, up to. But they get decent units. They get units at about 1,000, 1,200 square feet, right? I mean, this is maybe something that Los Altos should consider, you know, looking at them. They have, you know, some specific plans for El Camino. They have specific plans for downtown, maybe even for downtown here, something that makes sense. It's a combination of the FAR and the density and kind of just color-coded and just do an exercise, you know? I mean, I think the downtown committee did a good job, but I think that it has to be a little bit more comprehensive. And it has to be more defined on not just how we want the downtown to look, but on the same time, how do we meet our housing requirements in the city? And that will be where, when we have the discussion on density and how to make more affordable units and smaller units. And that's one of the things that I think that maybe the Planning Commission should consider, maybe staff. And I think there are plenty of examples from Palo Alto and Mountain View that recently defined that, that maybe should be looked at. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex Comsa?
Chairman, that-
Yeah, call you up right now. Show you up on the screen behind me?
Yeah, okay, so. So my name is Alex Comsa, last name spells C-O-M-S-A. I'm a licensed real estate professional and I reside in Palo Alto. I'm here to talk about a citywide plan in general. I know that you guys are focused on, on downtown for now. I believe Los Altos should look into incorporating a citywide precise plan that should address all components like max height, setbacks, lot coverage, FAR, density. Neighboring cities like Palo Alto and Mountain View got such programs in place. The ECR strip of Los Altos is actually a mix of Palo Alto, Mountain View, and Los Altos. And the plans on all three cities would have to be in sync. If you look at the block north of San Antonio, like five blocks north of that, you have basically three cities within five blocks. So, so, so those plans have to be in sync, in my opinion. Mountain View, as you could see on the screen, has an ECR precise plan that defines various zones within ECR. And that plan is quite precise. It's not based on feedback from neighbors with, you know, a funny handshake and stuff. It's based on reality. The FAR for village centers, the color code would be red, is reaching 2.3, the height of 75 feet, six stories, and density is at a minimum of 63 DU an acre versus Los Altos about 38. On the next screen, I want to mention about Palo Alto housing ordinance as of January 28. So Palo Alto got the housing ordinance in place as an alternative to state density bonus law and SB 35. Palo Alto City Council wants to keep control by implementing a housing incentive program to allow increases in residential FAR up to 3.0 and reroute developers to go SB 35 way, which is a 90-day approval process. On the next screens, I have some highlighting the fact that there's no parking requirement and no review for SB 35. And some highlights on the next screen, which should be some highlights about the Palo Alto ordinance. In the downtown area, you could see number eight, they established a housing incentive program up to, to allow increases in residential FAR up to 3.0. On the next screen, you could see on the California Avenue, which is similar to the downtown Los Altos, as they are eliminating the residential density, the maximum residential density, and they allow residential-only developments. And sensing applies with a commercial, it's a sample, example of increased residential FAR from existing .6 to 2.0.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And thank you for the materials. I think that's good to have. Yes, what I have, it's, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. As a dedicated first, as a dedicated and frequent reader of the general plan, let me wish you luck in trying to find guidance as you look at it in terms of FARs or indeed just about anything. The issue I want to address is what happens once you've decided what to do, and that is the notice requirement, particularly for districts that begin with a C like the commercial downtown or the commercial thoroughfare. Currently, it's 500 feet within the thing, and that has proved inadequate for some of these areas. I'm here to urge you, as I do frequently, to increase that for these or to consider recommending to council that these be increased for these particular kinds of areas. 500 feet makes sense if you have a single-family home and you need to let the neighbors know. It isn't adequate in these areas where there is a different kind of density and perhaps even a greater different kind of density to be considered. And so I would recommend increasing it to, staff would be the ones to do this, but maybe 1,000 feet or something so that there could be an adequate notice to those who will actually be affected by increased heights and that sort of thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on item number three? So close public comments and open it up for discussion.
I have a few things to say.
Go ahead.
Well, I really echo Duho when he says, what are we trying to do here? What's the goal? And then I moved down the road to Ronit and she says, well, we won't know what the goal is until we know what the tenor of the city is, not just the city council. We've had months, if not years, of research polling our residents as to what their expectations are, what they care about. And I believe that it would be good to have, as we've already requested from staff, the visioning conclusions as well as this downtown building group's results so that we can look at it. Because John, of course, is correct that FAR is a tool. And he's even more correct when he says FAR alone is not going to do anything because you can do an incredibly ugly building with a really tough FAR limit. So then I want to link that to the fact that SB 35, as one of our speakers pointed out, is attempting to trump everything that the city has control over. And in fact, what it comes down to is that if there's defined ministerial approval instead of the Planning Commission, and it has to be based on objective criteria, then we have to make sure that the objective criteria that's in our code is one we can live with that achieves the goal, which is the vision of what our residents are asking for. So I don't have an answer, but these are, that's how I define the issues. And my historic perspective is that I was on the downtown committees, two of them, maybe three, my memory is not so good, where we were looking at how we could take what at that time was a moribund downtown and make it what was expressed to city council and to us on the commission as wanting to have the town be more vibrant, wanting to encourage people to come here, want people to use the downtown, when in fact, the downtown had many, many empty spaces. We were in economic downturn. And the switch from floor area ratio to form-based design came about as a response to that. And for the first time, we began to see redevelopment- And for the first time, we began to see redevelopment significantly in the downtown. We can start with that as a heart. And then along the El Camino, which is where we can put bigger buildings, more dense residential mixed-use structures, because it is a major thoroughfare and it does have a transportation system, albeit, we all know that it's not the best, but at least it's there. And I think the difference to point out, to address one of the other speakers, is Mountain View and Palo Alto are huge. I mean, years ago, I don't know if this is still accurate, but I remember someone telling me, perhaps apocryphally, that the Parks and Rec budget for Palo Alto exceeded the entire city budget for the town of Los Altos. Perhaps that wasn't true, but it really put it in perspective. And the thing that makes our town different, and particularly in response along the El Camino thoroughfare, is the Mountain View side is not against residential properties. And the essence of Los Altos, the feeling of the village downtown and that we are a bedroom community, is that we have single-family residences despite what our government at the state level is dealing with, the fact is we are an R1 town, for all intents and purposes. We have commercial districts, but basically we're a single-family residential town. And that's what people move here for, and that's the job, I believe, of city council and we who inform them and when we can, to protect those residences who, when they bought their property behind a small, one-story commercial, been forever clock store on El Camino, did not expect to have a five-story building overlooking their backyard, with transparent balconies facing the back and light pollution and almost no way of protecting them. We can do it at the lower levels, but we can't do it at the upper levels. And so when the speaker asks for C districts to have a greater information point, that means more people will come out, they will understand what's happening, but I think that's, the horse is out of the barn at that point. What we really want to do is make sure that our zoning, as much as we can control it, protects our residents on an objective standard that cannot be denied if laws come down from the state to take it out of our hands. So, those are my comments.
I'll type in.
Go for it.
Sort of my issue with approaching, or trying to come up with a recommendation on...
Can I interrupt you for one second, just to go back to Phoebe before, so I guess just in terms of FAR, oh, sorry. In terms of FAR and whether we should look at it, are you...
In my opinion, in my professional opinion, aside from being a planning commissioner, I believe that FAR is not the tool that gets the result that we want. I think in some ways, and this is totally my opinion, it becomes, it's too gross a tool, it doesn't have any nuance. And I feel like it's almost, in my opinion, I have not seen it well-used in almost any situation. So, that's my opinion. So should we look at it? I'm perfectly willing to look, but I come at it with a prejudice that says, I don't think it is the tool to help us achieve the goal, until we know what the goal is. If the goal is that things should not grow ever, then it's a damn good tool. But that is not my proclivity relative to the town, is that I see things being developed all the time, and I don't think that's a bad thing, that's an opinion. And so if we want to kill development, we can go to an FAR. That's my bottom line.
Yeah, I mean, I sort of see three problems with approaching this task, and the first is it, you know, suggests that FAR is, you know, what Phoebe's saying, like definitive in shaping the look and feel or design of buildings, which we know it is not. It's a very, to just deal with FAR is a very piecemeal way of looking at what you want to achieve in terms of a desired look and feel. I mean, it is one tool in a multifaceted toolbox, and to just treat it as the single most important is like false narrative, I can't, I just can't get behind. The other issue I have is, we don't have in front of us actually what the town wants, and that is, should be reflected in the downtown visioning. And I know a lot of work was done on this building committee, but it was done by, you know, a group of 11 or 10 committee members, and the downtown visioning was, reflects hundreds of opinions, I'd like to say thousands, but I really don't know, and I hope it does.
It does.
Yeah. And over many, you know, like a lot of outreach was done in places where we, you know, from people that we don't usually hear from because they aren't coming to these commission meetings. But, you know, it was at farmers' markets and we were getting a wide swath of our population. And from what I read from that downtown visioning, the ideas and what was imagined for our downtown was actually, you know, quite different than, you know, the sort of premise that, you know, this came from a reaction to buildings that there, that people weren't happy with. So it was like, I think there was a perception, and I was around then, and I can also provide historical knowledge, is that there was a perception that the pendulum had swung too far, and that we needed to kind of over-correct to ensure that that wouldn't happen again. But in fact, when you look at the downtown visioning, it sends a completely different message about what is possible. So I really believe that we need to see what those recommendations translate to, and not just in terms of FAR, in terms of height, in terms of density, in terms of all of the different tools that we have to achieve look and feel. And really, that should be guiding us, not anything else.
If you'll allow me to interrupt, I believe that that should be your first point, that until we know what the goal is, we, it would be very difficult to find appropriate tools to meet the goal.
Right. And my third issue, also, you know, it is brought up by SB 35, and it's like, if you want to, you know, we talk about SB 35 a lot, but we rarely talk about why it exists. And it exists, in my mind, because small towns are trying to resist, they're trying to limit development and maybe even contract development, and so the state is leapfrogging us. And so I feel like if we don't stop doing that, well, SB 50 is coming, and then it will be SB 75, and it'll be SB 100, and we may win these battles, but we are going to lose the war of what our town will actually look like. And so I think we have to come at it with a more open mind and also consider what is coming down the pipeline in terms of the state taking control out of our hands if we continue to be too restrictive, because if we make it too hard to build an office building in our downtown, then what's a two-story or three-story, you know, because of our FAR and parking and da-da-da, then what we're going to get is a five-story residential complex using SB 35, and they won't even ask our opinion on it. So I really strongly feel that we shouldn't go down this road without additional information.
Yeah, I have a very hard time actually getting down to the sort of granular level of what is being asked here. I think, you know, I could use a little bit more background information on what the desires of the community are for the downtown. I think that's, because, you know, FAR is, from an architect's standpoint, it's the very beginnings of understanding the parameters of what can be built on site. But the shaping of the building and ultimately the expression of the building is really imposed by other types of criteria, it's like setbacks and building heights, and to a larger extent, requirements for, you know, higher standard of building, ultimately. So what the public will look at and feel is beyond, I mean, you know, it really doesn't have much to do with FAR, really, ultimately. But it's, I'm not opposed to looking at it, if it adds to the toolkit, right? And I think, to me, I mean, what I've experienced to date is that, just looking at the downtown, there seems to be within the downtown areas, kind of a hierarchy established between sort of the higher-density areas, especially along First Street, for example, versus the Main Street, which wants to have a charming village-like quality. So that's clearly perceptible, and I think that's what makes Los Altos, I think, unique within the Bay Area. And it's probably something that every citizen in Los Altos wants to preserve. And that's, it's an assumption, but I don't think I'm that far off. And I think you have areas like El Camino, which is, again, in terms of the overall hierarchy of the town, a place where higher density can occur. And I think you need that balance. I mean, I think, I'm not one for sort of thinking about towns as a museum piece, it's frozen in time, it's charming, but it's frozen. I think we need to establish a balance, that there needs to be development, there needs to be vitality to help, you know, drive the towns to be successful and have people want to invest their, you know, time, energy, and money to it. So I think there needs to be a balance, and I think people need to understand that development will occur and needs change. If the need is for higher-density housing, for example, which I think is a very important issue right now, then I think that needs to be addressed. And I think, single-family home res, you know, neighbors will need to understand that, that's a need that's larger than just a property that they own. So, I don't know, I'm sort of at the higher level of ruminating, but it's, in terms of what's being proposed as a, you know, if it's specific to FAR, sure, let's study what advantages this can give us as a tool. But I'm interested to see where it'll go.
Okay, well, I don't, I think I'm at the lower level of ruminating. So let me, I mean, everyone said some good stuff, I won't repeat any of them, but I did agree with a lot of it. I mean, it would also be helpful to see, though Phoebe says she's never seen, an example of where this is used successfully, if it is. I mean, you know, we've looked at, when we've looked at some other issues, you know, we sometimes look at other cities, and so has this been used successfully to promote good development versus, you know, blocks of, you know? But I was confused, because you said that FAR is a way to stop development, but FAR doesn't trump density bonus, and so then you get, you know, a block and then more. So I don't really think it's going to quash development. It depends if it's housing or not.
Differentiate which zones we're talking about and what kind of development.
Yeah, yeah, mm-hmm, true. But in some cases...
It could do the opposite, it could...
It could blow it up.
It could blow it up, right. And one thing, you know, there's, particularly on the part of the downtown building committee was objection to the First Street. But in my mind, although some of the newer buildings could have potentially been articulated or made more village-like in character, the real ugly building there is the one that's been there, that was probably under the FAR, which is that block, that three-story block, the Harmon Building. I mean, and that was presumably, I don't have the historic perspective on that, but that was when you had, I mean, it's three stories as a cube or rectangle or whatever the dimensions are. So to me, that's the worst offender in town.
And that was the original tipping point. That building was the one that created the downtown zoning in the ECRS.
Right. And if we could actually recreate that space, then, you know, so I don't, what I'm saying is that people may have been surprised by what showed up on First Street, but what really, I think, made that was the big, did I say ugly already? Ugly cube at the corner there.
Very modern at the time.
If, well, maybe, sure. So anyway, it's just all relative, but I think, you know, we certainly don't want to go down that path if we end up with more of those blocks. And you really get a good view when you go up the Safeway elevator and you look out and, you know, pedestrian level, it's not as bad, but poof, anyway. So I think it's possible that it could be potentially a tool, this or that, with some guidances, but again, depending on what zone we're in, you could actually, you know, the density on the residential is going to trump anything we try to put in place, so we have to be very careful. So, anyway.
Yeah, I echo what everyone has said, is that we can't really address FAR until we know what we're trying to, the goal that we're trying to get to and what we're trying to achieve. And then, even then, I think FAR is only one aspect, and it would require looking at many aspects, including density and all of these other things, and it's a massive, massive undertaking. And I don't know how long it took us to get, you know, what I thought was relatively easy, restriping. And that hasn't even done, you know, that hasn't even had an impact or done anything yet, and so, I mean, this is years, at least. So...
And we're happy to do it, aren't we?
I think we should be careful when we say we're happy to look at it, because I think we really need to have an understanding of how comprehensive it's going to be and what the parameters are going to be under which we're looking at this, because we, I think we'd have to look at it as a whole retooling and not just FAR.
Right.
And I think this is where our legal counsel would be very helpful, not tonight, but in the idea that if one of the goals we're looking at is being able to maintain the character of the town and look at specific areas where significant changes could happen, where the criteria for ministerial approval is objective and defensible, then we could very well use floor area ratio if that's a tool that helps us to allow ministerial approval to still produce a product we want. But that goes hand in hand with what's the goal, what's the goal in different districts? Because as one of our speakers pointed out, you know, we've got a lot of different districts, and we could look at the downtown triangle, we could look at CT, we could look at commercial thorough, I mean...
Similar to Mountain View as done, right?
Exactly.
Sort of.
But this is not, we'll just look at floor area ratio. I think it's a much bigger and more nuanced question. And where we could really use guidance is, once we, if we can open the discussion and say, what is the goal we're trying to achieve? In this zone, we want to do this, in that zone, we want to do that, in this zone, we want to do that, because the residents want this here, this here, and this here, or we think the residents want this, or we're making this assumption, or city council. Then we can take guidance and say, is this objective enough that someone can ministerially make the approval, and we can still feel like we're going to get a three-story office building instead of a five-story residence? And I have a tiny tweak, which has been bothering me for a while, which is, I would really like clarification that parapets are to hide roof equipment, they are not to hide the bulk of buildings. They are not to hide the bulk of buildings or to be used as a loophole. And so, that's an objective criteria. I'd like to have it spelled out, that when someone puts a parapet, it's designed to hide the air conditioning equipment. Sorry, that was a little in left field, but it was because the floor area ratio is one kind of guidance. But if you have loopholes, I'd like to close them. So if we put in an objective thing, it can't be screwed around with too much. So staff-
So can I share with the commission what I captured or think you might want us to come back with?
What I think I heard you say?
One is, you'd like a copy of the vision plan, along with the general plan, land use element where floor area ratios are discussed. Try and locate or provide some examples where floor area ratios are used successfully in other communities. And then I was thinking, would it be beneficial for the commission for us to do sort of a study of the downtown, looking at some of the newer buildings and some of the existing buildings, and bring back to you things such as the floor area? No?
I don't think so. I mean, I-
Isn't this all premature?
Right. I think that's too much work for you now.
Too much, okay. So start with those. I was just thinking, in the future, to help guide what could be a floor area ratio, that might be something that we could move on to as a next stage. And then the other thing, I think, to go to what the goal is, what you're trying to achieve, if you look at each of the zone districts, each one of those has sort of that beginning purpose statement or objective statement. That might be a good starting point, once we go beyond this review of the general plan and the vision document. So, just to put that out there for consideration.
What, where is the visioning?
It's adopted. We can get you all copies of it. It's online.
The downtown visioning has been?
It's been, yep.
Okay. But what's like the next, what do you think are the next steps?
The next steps is having the City Council adopt their priorities, and then that'll give us guidance on what we should, what elements or components of the downtown vision we should start moving towards implementing from a staff perspective.
And when do you expect that to be?
The City Council's taking out their priorities again at their next meeting next Tuesday, so.
At that same meeting, they're also looking at our story poll suggestions.
That's correct.
Something to look forward to.
Right. One question, you know, for some reason, most everything will come, like Community Center, we saw it once, I think, but we saw it. We didn't really see, there was, none of the downtown vision was ever presented to us. Of course, we could have gone to presentations, but, so I wonder, and probably the consultants long since gone off, but, I mean, is there somebody who could actually present it to us? I mean, it might be, I mean, obviously, we can read it, but-
We can, we can do the presentation.
Yeah, because I think it might be helpful. We can ask questions more so than just having them in front of us. Okay.
Just as a matter of interest, this El Camino precise plan, how long, does anybody know how long it took to put this together?
Couple of years, I think, to get through that process.
Couple of years?
Couple of years.
You're talking about Mountain Views?
Yeah, Mountain Views, yeah.
Oh, probably, at least.
Do other town, I mean, how many other towns have done this along El Camino?
The El Camino?
Is there statewide or county?
There's an organization called the Grand Boulevard Initiative, and includes all communities from just south of the city of San Francisco all the way into Santa Clara. And they have some sort of overarching guidance and policy documents, and we can get you a copy of that as well. That might be helpful.
It could be helpful, because it doesn't do us a lot of good to compare ourselves to Mountain View. In fact, it triggers, I think, for a lot of residents, the opposite effect, like, we don't want to be like Mountain View. And I would say, there's a lot of people that also feel that way about Palo Alto. But there are other towns along the El Camino that we probably find ourselves more.
But I really liked your idea of giving us the vision statement for the vision, different districts, because at the very least, that's a starting point. And if it doesn't get covered by the downtown vision, we'll still have other areas that'll give us input.
So, was that more wishy-washy than you expected us to be with this agenda item?
No, I, I'm coming away seeing that you want more information. You're not saying we don't want to explore FARs at all, but you'd like to evaluate some of the other documents that have been adopted by the city and have that as background information that will help you decide whether you want to move forward or what an appropriate FAR should be. But also, what else should the FARs be coupled with in terms of site development standards so that you're achieving the appropriate look of buildings?
And its objective criteria.
And objective criteria. Well, I have my list.
Close that discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
And-
I was the attendee at the Tuesday, February 26th, City Council meeting, where, phew, there were three things that I thought were relevant to us. They adopted a revision to the city norms and procedures relative to discipline or removal of a commissioner, requiring three members to bring it up to City Council for an agenda item as opposed to two. Apparently, they had never codified how to actually do anything. They just, it was in the norms, but no one knew what the process was. There was a hearing of the North County Library Authority Library Redevelopment Task Force, who were enthusiastic about the idea that the library would be redeveloped in some way, and they wanted City Council to support it. City Council had some question about whether that support was, in my opinion, was financially viable based on the budgets that the city has. So they were, I feeling unwilling to commit absolutely, though they liked it in concept. And then there was a story poll exception that passed, which was Zach helped an applicant figure out how to make it actually work, both from the viewpoint of people seeing it and being able to physically do it. And that was for the 355, 389 First Street. And that one was passed.
And they're now up.
And they're up.
On First Street.
And we'll be seeing the First Street developments whose polls and pictures are up at our next meeting. Was there any other meeting after that?
Yes. I'd like to report on the March 12th Council meeting. First item was the indoor cultivation for personal cannabis.
Oh, yes.
Growing personal cannabis. I think the, so the motion passes for a stricter regulation by-
Did your members, Planning Commission, recommended not doing that?
Correct, correct, yeah. So that's, it was a, let's see, four to one vote to pass for stricter regulations, which I believe involves more sort of intense exhaust measures.
Ventilation.
Right.
Physical controls.
Physical controls, correct, yeah. The other, the other aspect of that is that I think the regulation was modified to include, I think, the line, I may be getting this wrong, but two or more people complaining was the basis.
Are we going to have a nose of Los Altos?
Yes. Two noses.
As opposed to-
One nose, he takes two noses.
Two people or complaints will, I guess, become a nuisance, right? Public nuisance, be classified as a nuisance. The second item, I think, of significance is the update on the community center progress, which was well-attended and well, I think, represented from the community's standpoint. Very vocal. A number of folks from the community turned up to voice their full support for a speedy-
Back on track.
Get it back on track, yeah. But one wonders if it was ever off-track, but I don't know the long history of it. So, I think the, it seems like the process is in hand and moving forward. There are some administrative challenges in terms of kind of properly having staff representation for the project from the Los Altos city side, but I believe that's being addressed. So, I think, in general, the council members were in favor of moving it forward. There was certainly some concerns from a couple of the council members over usable space, certain aspects of detailing and articulation of the roofs, and certainly concerns over cost.
Which were addressed by an architect.
Correct, yes.
As were some of the other concerns.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, feel free to jump in as you were there.
No, you've described it. I was just going to comment, just because it was my, the previous item, you talked about the cannabis regulation, for me, was a matter of logic or illogic, as the case may be, because the previous ordinance was just put in place last October, and the complaints that were brought forward to council predated that ordinance. And so, what we ended up effectively doing was adding more legislation on top of something that was never enforced in the first place. I personally, you know, it doesn't matter, so that's fine. We've preemptively changed it, but, you know, the people who were complaining were complaining about something that predated the ordinance that was put in place in October and never had a chance to enforce that. So I just want to make that public statement to explain, you know.
Why Planning Commission had been unanimous and recommended there be no change?
Yeah. Because indeed, it could turn out that that ordinance put in place in October may not have been sufficient, but it was absolutely not enforced. So, anyway, there, I made my statement.
Any other commissioners' reports or comments?
I do want to remind everyone, and the commissioner who's not here, may we should pay attention, that our schedule for attendance in the City Council meetings has changed. The dates have changed, and so people should be aware of that. We have a new calendar.
That's correct.
But it was a surprise for some of us who plan our lives ahead.
A couple, well, I have one. So we, the mayor asked to meet with all the chairs of the various commissions, so I attended. Lasted about an hour and a half on, was it Tuesday?
Yes.
Tuesday.
So a couple of things. I was reminded that when the Planning Commission has an item on City Council's agenda, we actually need someone there to represent the Planning Commission, so we can't always just watch it on video. And so if you were planning, if you're on call to be there, and you can't make it, if you could please try to find someone to replace, to replace you. And so to that, and I've talked to John about, John has to be there.
He's so lucky.
And so, if he's going, he's going to alert us, whoever's scheduled for that meeting, so that'll be one more alarm clock for each of us. And that way, there's no question as to whether we need to actually be there or not.
Like, when we look at the agenda, we may miss something.
Yeah.
That's true, because you've seen the packet.
Right.
So you'll know whether there's nuances in there.
Exactly.
That wouldn't be obvious from the agenda.
Yeah.
That, that sounds good.
And I've also asked John to provide us with like a, you know, call it 90 to 120-day look ahead, so we just kind of all know what's coming down the pipeline.
And actually, that's very useful, because I want to remind people that if you miss three commission meetings in a row, it's an automatic expulsion from commission. And so if we have a little bit of notice, people who are traveling can at least figure out if it's going to work.
And that we, at the end of our meetings, talk about what John foresee is coming on our agenda for the next meeting, just so we're all aware and a little more visibility. And I guess back to, well, maybe not back to your point, but the other thing is also with talking about what's happening at the next meeting or the look ahead, is maybe not scheduling important kind of agenda items on weeks where there's either like a school vacation or something, because I think that's what, we had some poor attendance, and that was, may have been due to ski week and spring break.
Well, but also, I think it's important, I can't say how many times I said this, if you're not going to be able to make a meeting, you need to tell the chair and John, because otherwise, Yvonne winds up sending us an email saying, do we have a nose count?
No, that's right. But the other issue is, if we know that something's going to come up in two weeks, and we know that we're going to be gone for spring break or whatever it is, we can talk about it at that point, and they can defer it, as opposed to it's already been published and then it becomes a problem.
So how much notice do you, is it the meeting before sufficient relative to advance notice?
Not really. That's why I think it'll be beneficial for the 30 to 90-day lookout, and maybe we can, in those, begin specifying dates that we expect some of the larger projects to come in front of you, so that-
Yeah. But also just looking at the kind of school calendar and other things-
Or holidays.
Holidays, like all that stuff. I mean, yeah. And so, the other thing that came up was, it was related more to, well, I think, more to the Youth Commission and some of these other commissions about working with commissions in other cities. And so, you know, there was a comment from the audience about kind of the El Camino corridor and coordination and things like that, and so, I guess I would put it to my fellow commissioners about whether it makes sense to try to have, you know, whether it's an annual meeting or whatever it is, with Mountain View and Palo Alto and explore, you know, things that they're facing, best practices. I mean, just, if there's any interest in that or not, but it's something to think And I think that's all I have.
We, we have a couple of things at the staff table. Next Tuesday, the 26th, your recommendations to City Council regarding story poll policies are going to be considered by the City Council, so we're looking for a member of the Planning Commission to join us here at the table to do that presentation and be able to address questions at Council as they come up regarding your recommendations.
You said this coming Tuesday?
This coming Tuesday, the 26th.
I was, I was going to nominate either Duho or Phoebe or even-
I was going to go to the meeting, but I, I mean, I was going to go to the meeting. I don't have to, but I'm very interested in that because I think it would be good to keep those, to follow our recommendations. I'd like to support our recommendations. So, sure.
Okay.
Was, was one of us at the last meeting to, like, about the smoking?
Yeah, Phoebe and I were both there.
And did you have an opportunity to speak about it?
No, well, we could have.
Like, to explain our position?
We could have. So here's the piece. I find it interesting that City Council wants someone to physically be there, because up until maybe two City Councils ago, if there was a Planning Commission item-
Right, we talked about it.
The council called up the Planning Commissioner to talk about it. And then, with our previous mayor, that went by, and at which point it became, well, if you're not going to call us, why should we sit there? We can watch it on TV with the rest of the town. So I think this is an interesting thing, to have it come back, because I think we can inform the discussion.
And I would take it one step further, in that if all of these things are going to the- to the complete streets before they're coming to us, that it may be good to have a representative of complete streets when those items come to us. So.
That's a bad idea.
I think the thing that we were told at the time by this previous city council was that it would, one of the previous city council members didn't feel that members of planning commission could be objective enough if they were not in support of the particular position that the majority took, that that person who might have represented the minority would be unable to give an objective statement. And although we assured them that that was not the case, there was a certain disconnect there. And so I'm looking forward.
That's why John's there, too.
But that wasn't the council member, that wasn't a council member who said that, though, but.
Yes.
All right.
But I, yeah, I thought we had kind of beat this in one of our joint meetings with council.
Yeah, we did.
And they didn't, um, we weren't, and there was a good reason, I don't remember what it was, why they said they wouldn't call on us.
Well, I don't, I don't know if with this council it's changing or not, but that's one of the things that came up and however, that manifests itself.
It might be a good question for council is.
That is this council.
This council, EL, rather than IL. Because I think it had to do with, they didn't want us to be influencing. I mean, we could potentially be answering questions, but they chose not to answer them because they didn't want it to look like, you know, they're, they're hearing the item and it's, you know, we're under advisement, but we're not sitting there trying to persuade.
But we made recommendation.
Yeah, but the recommendation, exactly, the recommendations are there.
Yes, the recommendations are there.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, do you have a guidance as to whether commissioners, doesn't have to be us, but you know, attending council meetings, is it common that they might be asked questions? Or it's not common, or, I mean, does it, it can go any which way that they prefer? It's on, it's on.
Yeah, no, I don't see any problem with your attendance. Obviously, the, you know, the body has spoken, you, you as a body, as a body have spoken through your recommendations here, so I don't see any problem with that.
Well, no, I don't think there was ever an issue with attendance. It was whether.
We would speak.
We would ever be called on to speak. So you don't see an issue if they were interested in asking a question of clarification?
Yeah, obviously, you, an individual planning commissioner doesn't speak for the entirety of the body, the recommendation.
No, it would, wouldn't it?
Sometimes we say, the commission discussed it and as a.
Well, I think you could report, but I think there's a distinction between that and sort of purporting to do other than report, certainly.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But I mean, I think, right, okay, that's sufficient. I think we understand the difference between them, yeah.
All right, potential future agenda items.
Zach's got a couple of items to.
Ah, yes.
So, um, one thing to note, this will be your last meeting in this chambers for the next two months.
Oh, that's right.
As this will become the city's temporary permit center as some renovations take place on the front entrance replacing the door and a few other activities. So for April and May, planning commission meetings will be relocated to the social hall over at Hillview. It's right next to the multipurpose room. We'll, we'll be sending out multiple identification A-frames to help guide people because I'm sure there will be confusion. But so for April and May, let this be your first notice that they will not be held in this chamber.
Is the social hall the one with the stage in it and where people go?
Is it the very largest room or the one with the yoga studio?
It's right next to the multipurpose, which is the largest room. And we'll put some good signage to get you from the street in with some A-frames and like, but yes.
Some of you may recall you've had some joint meetings with the council in that room before.
Oh, okay.
Will you put those big bold letters? Because I know I'm going to come here first.
And then, well, it's a very short walk, it's okay.
Right, that's true.
So looking forward to our next meeting in April. The project that will be, be up for discussion is the mixed-use building at 389 First Street. Their story polls are in effect and everything is good to go. So that'll be the, the main discussion topic there. Moving forward to the next meeting, which is April 18th. We are tentatively anticipating the project at 425 First Street. That is pending their story poll exemption request, which is going before council next Tuesday. And that action will likely inform whether that project is able to move forward with that date. We also have the formal public hearing for the R3 4.5 code amendments. Potentially could happen on the 18th. We are waiting on some information from the applicant. So it could be either on the 18th at the earliest or more likely it could land on one of the main meetings. That date is still up in the air, pending additional information being submitted from the applicant and then we'll, we'll move forward with that. Let's see then, after that, our next meeting is. May, where are we? May, I'm sorry, got all the agendas in here, so I've got.
May 2nd.
Yeah, May 2nd. Um, at this point, there's nothing formally on there. I think the R3 4.5 or potentially 425 First Street could, could be likely ones. Um, another project that is, is probably going to come before the commission in May is it's a landscaping modification to an existing multifamily building on Third Street. They've got redwoods on either sides that are, that are wreaking havoc on their underground infrastructure. So they're looking for replacement screening species that are less damaging to their, their drainage and other infrastructure. So that, since those trees were specifically mandated as part of its approval, probably 15 years ago now, to pull them out and replace them, and they do need to come in with a formal change. Because interestingly, at the time, those redwoods were pitched as being the least invasive of roots and it turns out that was not the case.
Not true.
And, um, those, I don't know if we have any other projects that are queued up.
Until May, that's a couple of months, we're good.
Yeah, so, and then we, we do have our second meeting in May, which is May 16th. So those four meetings will be over at the social hall and, and unless we have any unforeseen delays on the construction, come back in June. And that actually is a, we're, we're looking, hopefully it'll be done mid, early May, but we're sort of planning out for the whole month, but hopefully we'll be back here in June. But we shall see.
That would be nice.
Thank you, Zach.
And thank you for combining today's agenda with the two items rather than having one and one, because I think this is, I mean, it'd be different if it was one of the huge projects or something, but so this is good, thank you, yeah.
All right, adjourn before nine.
Yay.
Just made it, thank you.